Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 p.m. on Monday, November 7th, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
So, for the first item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session according to Mass. General Law 30A, Section 219A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to reconvene an open session.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Number Adam Mottles?
Yes.
Number Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Number White?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we are going to move into executive session, and we will reconvene an open session shortly. Thank you, everyone. (end of transcript) (end of transcript)
More about that when she returns. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Looks like you're up again, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you. First item is the building committee update. So we did have a meeting on November 1st. At this meeting, the OPM and designer gave us an update of the DD submission, which is coming in. As you know, across the state, values are coming in very high. This project is not being spared that. It looks like estimates came in to be about 14 million higher than initially anticipated. So what that means for us is that means the OPM and the designers take a look at the project. They go over value engineering and they take a real deep dive into what the building has and what they can do to improve on the price. So that comes back to the committee. At this point, the MSBA has asked us to add that list to the submittal of the design, but we do not have to vote on it or make decisions. This is the first of three cost estimates that we're submitting. We will have another one probably in January, January, February, and then another one in June. So we will be, we got the initial look at this meeting and a review. And I will drop some of that information in for you for the next meeting, so you have time to review that. The committee will be meeting again on December 6th to review that list. They did not ask us to vote on anything. They just wanted us to digest the information to see what could be done with the project. So we voted to submit the design submittal, which is going in on November 15th. They're going to submit it into the MSBA. It will include a list of value engineering, but no, no decisions have been made. They just, the MSBA wants to know we're looking at that. So it's, you know, timing is everything. It's happening across the state. There's been many projects that have come in and people have had to go back to the communities and ask for additional fund, funding or go back out to bid. It's happening all over the place. MSBA also just sent out a notice. It doesn't affect the core program, which we're in, but they are putting a hold on their accelerated repair projects because everything is coming in so high. In their note, they said there were five communities that had to go back out and receive additional funding, which they did get approval of. And there was one community who went back out and people voted no to the additional funding. So it's just, I think they're trying to put the brakes on a little bit and slow things down. And we just have to work our way through the process and see what that means for us as we work through. But this is the first submittal. We don't have to make any hardcore decisions as of today. But eventually, we're going to have to take that value engineering list and make decisions and then prioritize. You know, maybe we, you know, look at things that we can reduce the scope of maybe without touching the educational part, because this building is all about the educational component and making sure that that stays, you know, core in this project. So that's where we stand with building committee. Are there any questions about that? Next item is maintenance. Maintenance has been running pretty smoothly. There are no, no major breaks or anything going on in the district. I hope you did see finally the sign out front. Our plaques came in, so we're excited about that. They were on back order for a while, so that project is complete and everything is running really smooth. So I don't want to jinx myself, but let's hope for warm weather stays throughout the winter and nothing breaks. We're happy. I'm going to move on to FY '24 budget updates. We have been meeting with principals, starting the budget process. They are going back and meeting with their leadership teams and their grade level teams, looking at extracurricular, getting budgets and needs and wants for the building. We will bring that back and meet as a team in December. We will have a leadership team as we start, maybe the last meeting in November, first meeting in December, to really start going through that as a team and looking what that means as a whole budget. I did get some good news today, looking at circuit breaker. As you know, when we budget for circuit breaker, we usually carry a year forward. So it's typically around six to 650,000. This year, I even asked to double check because I thought there was an error on it. I don't know if it's good or bad, but we're getting 900,000 compared to the 650 of last year for FY '23. A big part of that is transportation, which means that it's costing the district more money. We had a lot of late move-ins that we weren't fiscally responsible for last year that this year we actually were responsible for. So that increased our reimbursement. We are getting reimbursed at 75%. That's the estimate right now for circuit breaker tuition, and they've added transportation in that. So it is a significant increase, which hopefully will help offset some of those courses as we plan, because you can only, you're only allowed to carry forward one year of circuit breaker. So whatever we carry forward, the 900 this year, we have to spend it next year. Budget that to offset that. So that is good news and we are working our way through the budget. Any questions on that? No? And then just in other updates, I wanted to inform you that the other signs for the fields have been ordered and waiting for them to come in. We are looking for crossing guards. If anybody knows anybody or is willing to talk to anybody, advertising again, I will be putting it out on the Smart Shopper Guide, but we're always looking for crossing guards or cafeteria subs or any regular subs in the buildings. COVID is actually hitting our buildings and we're seeing people out more. So any kind of help that we can get in the buildings would be fantastic. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments from the committee? The next item on the agenda is the principal report. And joining us this evening is Ms. Peterson from Webster Middle School. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So we have our yearly parent teacher conferences coming up on November 16th. And we have two sessions, one from 12:30 to 2 o'clock for an afternoon session and the other from 6 to 8 p.m. We are utilizing again this year MyConferenceTime.com, which allows parents to sign up and get a time that they would like. And this year, we are going to be asking students to join their parents for conferences. As students get to middle school, they should be starting to take more responsibility for their academics. So I think it's important that they hear and contribute to what is happening in their educational day. We also have coming up this week, actually, we are going to be doing a Veterans Day celebration and honoring veterans, hopefully making this a new tradition at WMS. So that starts at 1 o'clock. I believe you all received an invite, hopefully. And so we are planning on having the veterans join us for some coffee and then go into the gym where the students will be waiting for them and we'll play some music as they enter. We do have a guest speaker who is one of our teachers' father-in-laws, and he is a veteran who's going to speak to the students. I guess he has done this elsewhere and he's very adept at speaking, so we'll welcome him. We had eighth grade chorus audition to sing the National Anthem. So we have one of our eighth graders singing the National Anthem. And then the sixth grade, well, sixth grade chorus will be doing some songs as well. I believe they're doing God Bless America. So we're looking forward to, to having the community in and honoring our veterans. An update on our PBIS. We held our first event, which took place on October 30th. Students used their PBIS tickets to buy a ticket into the event. There were games in the library. There were activities in the gym and dancing in the caf and a movie in the library. And so we split those sessions into fifth and sixth graders coming right after school until 4 o'clock. And then seventh and eighth graders come back from 4:15 to 5:00. And it works out really well and the turnout was great and a good time was had by all. We also continue our monthly recognitions for PBIS through our community meetings. And Thursday, Thursday's going to be a busy day for us. Thursday morning, we are going to be recognizing our students of the month with a breakfast for their families. I wanted to update you on our Yonder cellphone cases. I did bring some samples so that you could actually see what the cases are, if you would allow me to bring them over to you. Great.
That would be great. Thanks.
What they look like, I don't know what camera.
Did you bring the magnet?
I brought the magnet as well. So they are, you know, the size of a cellphone with the cover with the top.
Maybe they're already locked, right? The joke's on us.
Every teacher who has a homeroom has one of these. It's very much like when you go to the store and you buy a dress and it has the tag on it and then it's exactly the same technology. So basically what you can do is tap it and then press the button and it opens. So they drop their cellphone in, it stays open after they leave. And then, so there's a little button in here. Put their cellphone in, tap it up, it's locked for the day, so they can't get it open. As you can see, they are just a material. So I know one of the concerns from parents was emergency situations. So really, in an emergency, these are actually very easy to cut into with any sharp object if they really need a reason. As we've said before, we don't want them actually, in an emergency, getting to their phone. We want them going to the safe place. Obviously, when they get to the safe place, they need. But, so that's the examples. So you can pass that around and just. Yes? So those are kept safely in the.
Very cool.
Teacher's rooms. So I get back to.
There you go.
So our implementation of Yonder has gone pretty well. We started implementation on October 25th, and so we are beginning our third week this week. I have, we administrators have had multiple parents reach out to us. I had 10 that reached out to me directly. Unfortunately, when this was implemented, I was out sick with COVID. So poor Mr. Corsi and Ms. Bergeron had to deal with all of the implementation. But of the 10 parents who reached out to me, I was able to return seven phone calls to this point. So I know that Mr. Corsi and Ms. Bergeron talked to many parents. And in hindsight, you know, I think it would have been a good idea to probably show the parents the cases, just like I showed you. It probably would have put a lot of people more at ease. So in the future, that's what I would do, but it's done now. So we are going to be tracking our usage data. So at this point, we have, I reached out to the staff members and we actually have 54% of our students using the bags on a regular basis with no problem during the day. And surprisingly enough, the highest number broken down by grade level, we have 62% of our eighth graders are using them, which is, I would have thought, would have been the grade that would have balked at it more, but they are actually participating and using it with no issues at all. And in terms of discipline, we've really had no increase in, in discipline in terms of phone usage or having phones out. So like I said, we'll continue monitoring the data, the use, the discipline. And really, you know, there's so much research and information out there about that cellphones are detrimental to the learning environment and that everyone who has implemented either a case like this or just strictly a no cellphone policy have seen increases in not only communication with their peers, communication with adults, but an academic rise in grades and performance as well. So hopefully, in the long term, that's what we eventually want to see. And that's the whole reason for the use of the bags anyhow. So questions, concerns?
So Ms. Peterson, you mentioned there hasn't been an increase in behavioral incidents related to cellphones. Has there been a decrease or no change?
I would probably say at this point, we're seeing it pretty static, maybe one or two a day. And that's a typical, typical situation. So we are enforcing the use of the bag. The bottom line is, you know, and this is what I've told parents who call and have concerns about the magnet or whatever have you. The bottom line is, I don't want to see your cellphone. If you don't use the bag, I don't have a problem with that. But if you're going to have your phone out, then that becomes a problem. So it's just an added layer of, not protection, but an added layer of, what's the word? Security in terms of keeping kids on task and keeping a safe building. So if they don't want to use the bag, it's actually forcing some of them who we have had problems with before to keep them out of our sight. So, and like I said, I'm surprised at the students who are using the bag. And, you know, I saw someone today, I was, I took a double take because I was like, oh, he has his bag locked up. So it is working, so.
Great. It would be great if we could talk about behavioral data more generalized. We're probably not ready to do that tonight, but just to talk about, you know, how that's going and, you know, how frequently kids are being asked to leave the classroom and, you know, what kind of support administration is providing related to behavior management and that kind of thing. I know that in particular, last year, our schools across the country were dealing with increases in behavioral challenges, you know, coming out of homeschooling and that kind of thing. And I suspect it's getting better, but probably hasn't quite normalized yet, so.
Just to touch on it briefly, yes, you're right. It has gotten better. We have seen a decrease in high, high kind of priority situations. But there's room for improvement. There's always room for improvement. We are, we did start using a new data system collection for discipline called Educator's Handbook. And all three schools are using that and implementing it immediately. The great thing about Educator's Handbook is it works in conjunction with Power School, so we don't have to be double-entering things. So those of you familiar with Swiss, we would have had to double-enter state reportable incidents, but Educator's Handbook does, it, it works together. It feeds into Power School. The great thing about Educator's Handbook is it is very user-friendly. I just introduced it to staff Friday and today. And they have videos and help sessions for teachers to very easily look at things. But what happens is we can track all the discipline data. We can track phone calls. We can, there's a merit system as well. And the administration can look and see what teachers have done. So if something comes to us, we can see, well, this, this child had five detentions already with a teacher, and so there's a pattern here. It looks at, it graphs times of day. If you look at a specific student or if you want to look at the whole school, it graphs places that things are taking, things are taking place. So I think it's going to be really beneficial for us in tracking data and being able to report, not only report it, but utilize the data for the betterment of the building.
Yeah, that sounds great. What's the merit system? Is that something like a PBIS type of a?
Yes, yeah. So I actually haven't explored that too much myself, but I think that they can go in and just do like a, you know, Jimmy took the trash out or something.
Like a compliment?
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Be good to hear more about that next time you're here. I know it's a little while, but maybe we'll have some data by then. Sounds like it's just being implemented, right?
Yes, yep.
Great. Glad to hear it's user-friendly. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair. So you mentioned that we should have received an invite to the Veterans Day. I don't see one. Do you mind having that sent out?
Sure, I will do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think I might have gotten mine on Dojo, actually, because I'm a mom for a middle schooler. I was looking in my email and.
You should have all gotten one separately, so I apologize that the secretary didn't.
It's possible. Oh, that's right.
It was on paper. It's my mistake. I was not here.
Okay.
Thank you. I will get it.
Okay.
Linda's pulling it out.
Thanks.
Perfect. Any, no other questions or comments from the committee? Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Nice to hear from you. Lots of good things happening. The next item on the agenda under old business is the monthly report on fundraising applications. Just as a reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising applications, but we don't approve them. Those are done at the building level. It looks like we have a number of fundraising applications in here. Medical Careers Club selling carnations, varsity baseball, doing a meat raffle, BHS volleyball doing a bake sale, the class of 2025 having a pie and cookie sale, and WMS PBIS is having a concession sale at the middle school basketball game. Is that everything, Mrs. Prangeli? Any questions or comments from the committee about the fundraising activity? No? Okay, well, I wish all of them good luck with their fundraising. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of two new voting members for the Bartlett High School Building Committee. Mrs. Prangeli?
Thank you. So at our last meeting, we requested, the building committee requested to add two members, two additional voting members to the building committee. We did receive two emails, I believe they're in your packet. One from Victor Waskevich. He is a local contractor in town. He would serve a good role on the building committee as we need to have a contractor or somebody knowledgeable about building. So he would fit that role nicely. We also received a letter from Tim Bell. He is the town accountant, but he is also a resident of Webster. Currently participates in building committee meetings, but is not a voting member. So he would like to be a voting member. All the voting members on the building committee are Webster residents. None of us as leaders or principals vote, have a voting say. It's all Webster residents. So we are asking to add those two committee members as voting members of the building committee.
That's great news. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Mr. Amos.
I know obviously Tim's been going to these meetings in his role as the town accountant. Is there any conflict with now having him potentially be a voting member on the committee while also having to potentially oversee the borrowing for the project and?
MSBA said we could have whoever we wanted as a voting member. So they didn't see an issue with it. And he is, you know, as his role, he comes and he participates and he just advises as far as financial, the town financials. But I think he would be a great addition.
I think there's no conflict. Thank you.
Great question. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two new voting members to the Bartlett High School Building Committee.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
You got a motion?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And thank you to Mr. Waskevich and Mr. Bell for stepping up.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. The next item on the agenda is the food services update. And joining us tonight is Kelsey Sanders, our food service director. Good evening, Kelsey.
Hi. So it's really good to be here again. Last time, at my first committee meeting, I was still, you know, getting used to the position and the school year hadn't started yet. We were still in the summer period. So I was just going to start my report by kind of recapping the summer. It went really good for us this year. I know I mentioned this last time, but it was really nice to be able to see those 18 and under in the community actually being able to eat on-site rather than just having grab-and-go meals. It gave us the opportunity to do activities on the sites. At Park Ave, we did a book raffle with, the students made their own bingo boards and they got to pick their favorite foods. And at the end of the day, everyone won a book and it was really fun. With a group of fourth graders, we did a make-your-own parfait. And at the open sites, which were Park Ave, Webster Middle School and the library, open site meaning that anyone in the public 18 and under can come. We did a lot of those types of activities. And I just wanted to give special recognition, recognition to Project Bread. Their nonprofit organization helps us a lot. And for summer, we wouldn't have been able to do as many activities and giveaways and raffles at the sites if it wasn't for them. They also gave us a lot of, they call it swag items. So we got Project Bread and Summer Eats promoting sunglasses, t-shirts, little drawstring bags for them to get their meals in. And for next year, you know, the ultimate goal is going to be to increase participation and increase awareness of what we're actually offering over the summers and increase those activities and make more room for educational opportunities on-site. And we'd love to find a way to have the school garden somehow involved in our summer activities. At the end of the summer total, we served 2,695 breakfasts and 3,677 lunches, and that was during 23 days of operation. And now going into the current school year, it's been great too. Now that things are in-person and somewhat post-pandemic, we've had a lot of catering requests through our department. We had the student of the month breakfast at Park Ave. And this is going to be, I believe it's monthly or bimonthly they're going to do it. We had the senior breakfast at Bartlett High. We had the National Junior Honor Society Ceremony at Webster Middle. And then later this week, we are having the Webster Middle School Student of the Month. So we've been able to have the opportunity to actually cater those events, which is nice to be able to have the food service department rather than outside food, you know, keep it in the school community. So we're very thankful to be asked to do those things. And at Webster Middle, last month, we also did a taste test with the students. It was really fun. We participate in Harvest of the Month, which is a part of Mass Farm to School, where they promote produce and crops and each month one is highlighted. And to serve it in the schools, you have to serve something local and sustainable. And it's a really good learning opportunity. It's a good chance to expose students to foods they may not have tried before. And it starts a conversation. And it, it was great to watch the whole cafeteria be involved each lunch period and in the chain of reactions that happens when they each start telling each other about it. And I had a student tell me he doesn't like cranberries. He tried it, he loved it. It was a pear and cranberry salad with apple cider vinaigrette. And we did a poll where the incentive was they got to keep a sticker and then another sticker they put on a chart. And we had a really good turnout of the responses of liking it. I know when Ellen was here, she did a lot of taste tests at the school and events like that. So we are going to continue them going forward. In the past, she has worked with the marketing department at Bartlett to do promoting and actually helping out with presenting this in the cafeteria. When it is December, we're going to be including the marketing students and the harvest of the month is carrots. So they're going to think of what meal we can serve and, you know, sell it to the students for us. That's going to be great. This month, we're going to do kale chips because kale is the harvest of the month and just having more activity in the cafeteria and more exposure to different foods and keeping food fun. At the end of the day, it's, you know, showing that healthy food can be fun and good. And on the topic, I know I had outlined a goal for this year is to have more cultural and diverse meals in our kitchens along with more scratch cooking, which has been going really well. We had the Hispanic Heritage Month. Each cafeteria did a meal for them and we highlighted it in the cafeteria that day. Another opportunity. in the cafeteria that day. Another opportunity, we catered for the Hispanic Heritage Movie Night at the middle school. And we had an Asian Fusion Day at the middle school where they served Mandarin Chicken Dumplings, and they were a hit. And we definitely want to keep our goal of going with the exposure and diversity and even narrowing it down, focusing more on our school demographic, catering to the demographic of the actual school community. As I somewhat mentioned, we are expanding on the school gardens in our farm-to-school program. We are in the action phase of the program, utilizing the current beds and space we have with goals and visions of moving forward. We're currently working on developing a committee for our farm-to-school of teachers, anyone in the school community, even extending it to the outer community, anyone interested in being part of the farm-to-school movement here in Webster. And we're also hoping to make that connection with teachers and the students, to have the garden involved in the classroom, to be able to have it be an additional educational tool and really just get students in there and get them exposed and learning. And then we also, now that COVID's on the lull, hopefully, I'll also knock on wood, have a view for future farm-to-school field trips. They've done them in the past where they visit local farms and organizations. And we're hoping that we can extend that and maybe squeeze one in this year, if not, definitely next year. And now, that's all the fun stuff, pretty much, but we have a DESI Administrative Review coming up. We were chosen for-
That's fun.
It is. No, it is. It is. We were chosen this year for review. It is a thorough process, but Monique has said multiple times, it is a really good learning opportunity, and it's a good way to give you measurement of how things are going in the schools and in your operations. They're going to be on-site with us January 9th and 10th of 2023, so this January, right around the corner. And the school site that they chose was Park Ave. They're going to look at our national school lunch program. They're also going to look at our breakfast, but that is going to be done virtually over Zoom. I'm going to be giving them a walkthrough, and then we're going to meet and do the corresponding paperwork. So once we approach January, I'll have probably more information on that. Right now, we are seeing a lot of, still a lot of supply chain issues, things not coming in, a steady increase in prices right now. It's getting better. I'll say that optimistically. It's getting better, but it's still a struggle. And I will say that this year, as of July 1st until June 30th of this next year, there is an additional 40 cent increase per lunch and 15 cent per breakfast reimbursement. So through federal reimbursements, we're able to get a little bit more. So that might be a factor in helping offset prices. We also have another opportunity for supply chain assistance funds, which is from the USDA, and they will cover the costs of locally unprocessed or minimally processed foods. So that's really going to be a help. We did get that last year, and that was a really big help for us in offsetting that supply chain increase. And we, at the same time, are still utilizing our government funds from programs like DOD and Brown Box, which also helps reduce the costs. And DOD this year has a lot of local offerings, which is nice to see. Not only are we saving, we're getting the local fruits and vegetables through them. We are also looking at applying for a federal equipment grant. I don't have any numbers for you or any idea of when or what equipment. I just wanted to highlight that we are applying for an equipment grant through the government. It would be nice. I know the schools have a few things in, on their wish list, and Ellen said she had done this in the past, so it's just something on the agenda. Our adult meal sales is also a focus for this year, kind of bringing business into the cafeteria. And we also want to be able to provide the school community adults a nice lunch right, right where they work and to be able to just come into the cafeteria. I wanted to give a shout out to Stacy, the cafeteria manager at Park Ave. She does an excellent job with the adult meals, and we're going to try to continue that into our other cafeterias and have other offerings rather than just the main lunch salad or sandwiches. And we are actually getting a cooler at Park Ave for the adult meals because Stacy's program has been extending so much, and that's going to go over great. And we also, I know Monique already told you about this, but the Combi steamer oven, we're hoping that it'll be in, in December. I know the lead times are also rough with equipment on top of supplies, but we're hoping that'll be in, in December. And I know previously discussed that there have been some repairs, nothing major to some of the equipment in the schools and the moving of the kettle. And Project Bread, again, we had the summer fund granted, and we had a staff retention grant, which was a really good opportunity to get small equipment and supplies in the kitchen. I know that the staff was most happy about brand-new cutting boards and knives, and we were able to get staff apparel and new aprons through that. And we were just as of last week approved for another Project Bread grant of $6,000 to support breakfast operations, more so focusing on second-chance breakfast and breakfast after the bell. So that'll be a great opportunity to expand on our breakfast and hopefully get participation up on breakfast. And I will be attending next week, that School Lunch Association Boot Camp. It's a virtual workshop. I got this email as a new director and said, did they make this for me? Because it's a crash course on school nutrition operations, and I just think that will be a great way to help boost my knowledge and abilities within that. So I'm sure I'll have some interesting stuff from that for you guys. As Monique mentioned, we did hire a Park Ave cafeteria worker. And at the very beginning of the year, we also hired a Park Ave breakfast employee and a driver slash cafeteria worker at Bartlett. I will say, we are, again, knocking on wood, mostly fully staffed. We are very much so looking for calf substitutes still. We have two at the moment. And I want to just give a shout out to the staff because I know I haven't been here through it all, but they have. They worked so hard through COVID and during staff shortages. And when we have a supply chain issue thrown at them, it'll take them a few minutes and they'll have a different meal right on board in the back of their mind. They're so quick to adjust. They're so good in their service to the students. And it's just a blessing to be able to come in and have a staff like this. And we're also looking into additional professional development opportunities and getting back on board with meeting the requirements of continued education that is for each staff required. COVID kind of put a loop into that, but we're going to try to get back on track with it. And all of the cooks and managers as of this month are currently up-to-date trained on food allergies. And yes, the food allergies and food safety, that's the word I was looking for. So they are up-to-date trained on those. And I'll end on a fun note now. I have started up a few social media outlets for our Food Service Department. I think it's a great way to just get it out there and be able to engage with the community. We have a Facebook page. If you just look up Webster Schools Food Service Department and an Instagram, Webster Food Service. We started with the Facebook page, but I was told that the younger demographic prefers Instagram, so we're going to go with that one, too. And it'll just be a good way to be able to reach everyone and keep expanding and working towards the goals. And next time, hopefully, I'll be able to give you some more positive information.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders, for your very thorough update. Lots of things going on in food services. Great, great things, though.
Oh, and I'm so sorry. I missed something. I know there was looking for clarification on meals on half-days. So this is per DESI, not per the district. We cannot serve lunch on half-days anymore as a grab-and-go option. We will still be doing breakfast there. The reason being that it would have to be a sit-down lunch, which could be talked about within the specific school administrations, but they are not allowing grab-and-go meals on half-days. From the sounds of it, it may not be concrete, but as of right now, we can't do half-day lunches unless it's sit-down service, like a typical lunch.
Oh, that's too bad. You all did an amazing job of feeding kids on half-days over the last couple of years.
Yes. And if you'd like to provide feedback to DESI, they, they did say at the last meeting that they would love to hear people's opinions on it before, you know, it's, it's a concrete yes or a concrete no.
That's a great point. I have a feeling a lot of families are probably relying on those grab-and-go lunches. I wonder if there's a way for us to put something out on Dojo and maybe by email to inform families, first of all, that their children won't be coming home with lunch on those half-days any longer. And then maybe also include in that that DESI's looking for feedback on that, on that policy. It's a good opportunity for families to express their feelings on that topic.
Absolutely, especially as a CEP district. And I think we really benefited from that, so.
Right.
Feedback would be very helpful.
Right, exactly. And we have a couple of half-days coming up, actually, this month. So that would be great if we could get that communication out to families. I know I noticed when we were planning our, our school lunch, our home lunch situation, that it did say on the menu, you know, no lunch served or something like that. But I'm not sure that families are realizing that there's also no, no brown bag going home.
That's a good point. We'll have to get the communication out to all the families of each school.
Great. Thanks for letting us know about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I just wanted to thank Kelsey. You're doing a great job coming in. She's dived right in. And she is very energetic, and she takes the liberty to figure things out. She'll come in, she'll ask a question, and then she'll take it and run with it. And she is not afraid to reach out to anybody to find out, you know, what she needs to do. So nice job, and thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Monique.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job. The next item on the agenda is the discussion and vote on the superintendent search. So as most of you probably are aware, we have an upcoming vacancy in the superintendency here in Webster. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been gathering information and consulting with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, who actually visited one of our meetings recently. And they've given us some options and some guidance around how we can undertake, you know, seeking to fill the superintendency. So just as a quick bringing everyone up to speed, Dr. Gogan is going to be retiring, and she'll be leaving in March. So we are in a position where we will need somebody to carry us through the rest of the school year and obviously begin the next school year. That may be the same person, or it may need to be someone else. So this evening, the hope is that we will discuss our options around, first of all, whether we enlist the assistance of MASC or another entity to guide us through the process of posting and searching for a superintendent, and then beyond that, how we'll go about filling it. So I'll open it up to the committee for thoughts and comments or questions.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopolis?
Based upon the presentation that we got at our last meeting from ASC, MASC, sorry, my recommendation would be that we strongly consider bringing them on to help guide us through this. I think their price point is on par with any third-party group that we ultimately bring in. And it does appear that they have the knowledge to make sure that we're getting the right type of candidates and having this posted the correct way, but also doing a lot of the backend work of meeting with the staff, meeting with families and students, administrators, to make sure that ultimately the presentation that we'll be posting kind of gets all that in place. So since they have such a wide reach in the state and ultimately know how to get this posted the correct way, my recommendation is that we bring them on as our consultants so that they can help us as a group, but also the future search committee.
Thank you, Mr. Adamopolis. Any other comments from the committee?
Through the chair. I feel the exact same way as, as Mr. Adamopolis stated. I think that they would be a really good option to consult with.
All right. If that's the desire of the committee, I mean, I'll entertain a motion to contract with the MASC to assist us with the search, unless there's any further discussion, of course.
Through the chair. Just add, I think the reason that it would make most sense for us to do something sooner than later is we want to take advantage of the fact that this is kind of before all the other districts may have openings. And I think by engaging them, hopefully as soon as tonight, to get those going, they'll help us make sure that we are getting this and getting those candidates as soon as possible before they start looking at other potential avenues.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Adamopolis. So, you know, we may have some, some challenges around attracting somebody to start in March, right? But, you know, posting something that has a flexible start date, that, you know, someone could start as early as March or as late as July, might help us get the widest range of candidates available.
Through the chair. I would make a motion that we enter into a contract with the MASC to hire them as a consultants for both the school committee and the superintendent search committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Adamopolis?
Yes.
Number one?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. So with that being the desire of the committee, Mrs. Pranjali, can you assist us with finding funding for this and with beginning the process of a contract? I assume the contract will be with the school committee, but can you help us get that underway?
Sure. Sure. I will reach out to MASC and get a contract and have a transfer for your next school committee meeting.
Excellent. All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion around the superintendent search?
Through the chair. I guess my only question is, do we want to wait until they're drawn on? Do we want to start discussing what may have to happen as early as March concerning if there, if we do get a candidate that says they can't start until July? Do we want to discuss potential avenues of how we would address that opening? Or do we want to see if MASC brings us any recommendations at that point?
You know, maybe we can see what happens with the posting. And, you know, I think according to MASC, it sounds like they, first of all, recommend that we look within the district, see if there's anyone within the district that can carry us through. But if that's not a viable option, they seem to have people available that are retired administrators or superintendents that they could bring in with relatively short notice. I would say if by, you know, February, we come to the realization that either the majority of our candidates are not able to start until July, or we don't have great candidates and we need to reopen the search, they would be able to bring us somebody if we don't have anyone internal.
Thank you.
Sure. Great question. Anything else from the committee? No? Okay. So the next item on the agenda under New Business is the approval of the cafeteria workers' contract. Good evening again, Mrs. Pranjali.
Good evening. In your packet, you have a copy of the cafeteria contract. We did meet with the cafeteria full-time workers and reviewed the contract, and we are recommending the approval of the agreement with them.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the new contract for the cafeteria workers? No. Just in reviewing the contract, I'm really pleased that we were able to bring an increase to that team. They've been a really dedicated team that have shown up every day, even through school closures and bad weather handing out bagged lunches in the parking lot. I know they always had a smile on their face and were some of the only school personnel we saw during COVID for a period of time there. And it didn't go unnoticed, for sure, whether it be by us or by other members of the community. It's really great to be able to recognize their efforts and give them an increase. So, and thanks to everyone that participated in the negotiation on that as well.
Problem. Thank you. They're a great group.
They sure are.
They were.
Yeah, yep. If there's no other comments or discussion about that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Adamopolis?
Yes.
Number one?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And thanks again to all of you. And then the next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and-
No, skipped over one.
What did I skip over?
The additional two.
It's not in the paper.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm using the paper.
And the memo is in the packet, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's not on the, the paper printout. It's on the agenda that's on a, yes.
Oh, not on my, in your costume bracket.
Yeah.
On the table.
Yeah, you reposted at 12:41. This one's from 10:07. Yeah, you reposted at 12:41. This one's from 10:07. Attention to detail. Sorry, I missed that. So, thank you for catching me, Mrs. Prangeli. The next item on the agenda, actually, is the approval of two FTEs, additional ABA positions in the preschool at Park Avenue Elementary School.
I am going to let Mrs. Barr speak to that.
Hi, good evening. So, this year, as many school districts have really experienced, we've had a significant increase in referrals from early intervention. It started mid-year last year, and it hasn't really stopped. And I will say that I think a lot of the students that are coming to us for evaluation are very high-needs individuals. So, we have, at this point in time, four new students starting over the course of the next two months, and they are halftime students. So, to pair those students together, we would require two additional staff at the preschool level. So, these are students with, you know, more severe developmental disabilities who require individualized attention throughout the day. And of course, our goal is always to try to promote as much as possible their independence. So, you know, and look at fated support as time goes on. But it is very difficult, as you know, like in this labor market, to have a lot of strong candidates come along. So we wanted to try to get it out there as soon as we can so that these students can be supported when they start. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Just to let the committee know, we would be funding this with savings in our budget, salary savings. We have some positions that we haven't been able to fill, so we do have some surplus in the budget. So we would be funding those positions with that.
Okay. I don't think that memo was in the packet. So if we could just maybe add that into the packet so that we can review it and just have that in our record, that would be great. I mean, clearly, I think, you know, when kids are coming to us with needs, it's our responsibility, right, to meet their needs and ensure that they have the supports that they need to set them up for success for kindergarten.
Right.
So.
We do what we can to, you know, to try to take a look at existing staff and students who are, you know, moving along. And, you know, we can use staff that used to be more for intensive needs that are now, you know, time has been freed up. But this is, I think, more of a critical need because it's, we've just had so many referrals come through. And unfortunately, you know, a lot of high-needs students.
Okay. Thank you for the information. Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from the committee? Any discussion? No? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additional two FTEs for ABA positions at the preschool at Park Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Can I run it up?
Yes.
Remember that Brad?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Now, the real next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Remember Adamopolis?
Yes.
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 Yes. Good evening, everyone.